Let's call the finance business meeting to order. Adam Burke, you call and roll, please.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Stankster.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Eustace.
Here.
Commissioner Claremont.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Here.
Commissioner Warfield.
Here.
All presidents of county, please stand for the invitation. Heavenly Father, guide us today as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Chippewa County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf for the good of all, as we pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with due respect, for its inhabitants, one nation, united in the heavens, with justice for all.
We're down to four on the agenda. How about a motion to approve the agenda?
There's no additions, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rich, and Stuart.
Or.
Thank you, Jeff Hossman. Dan Clark.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yeah.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Stankster.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. That's move seven and zero. We're down to five, approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion, sure.
Thank you, Stuart.
Or.
Thank you, Steve. Dan Clark.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stankster.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. That's carried seven and zero. We're down to break citizens' comments, item six on the agenda. Please approach the podium if you have something you want to talk to the board about, if you have three minutes. Give us your name, please.
Good morning. My name is Chris Brown.
Hi, Chris.
Hi. Co-owner of the Waterway Inn in Indian River. Time this out, it should be way after now, so be there with me. Why don't you imagine for a moment a hypothetical, imagine driving through your neighborhood. When you are unexpectedly pulled over by a police officer, you are informed that someone with a documented history of mental illness left to complain alleging that two days prior, your car was speeding. The officer does not have radar data, eyewitness testimony, or video footage. The only evidence is a satellite image showing that your vehicle was in the area. Despite the lack of concrete evidence, the officer informs you of the remedies of your alleged violations, presuming guilt, and says that unless you can prove you were not speeding, the citation stands. When you request to see the evidence, you are shown the same satellite image. You are then told that your presence in the area is proof enough of guilt, the authorities are willing to take this to court, despite knowing that satellite imagery lacks the precision to confirm such violation. Moreover, you learn that the official conducting the investigation of your speeding broke the law in the process and then lied about. When you question the process, you are told it's not the police department's responsibility to prove the complaint, it's your job to disprove it. Does that sound like a system that uphold justice and fairness to any of you? Do you want to live in that kind of environment? I don't see any hands. Me neither. So I bring this hypothetical to your attention because an American due process is a cornerstone of our legal system. Citizens are presumed innocent until proven guilty, and the burden of proof rests with the accuser, not the accused. Yet today in Chippewa County, I find myself living a real version of the hypothetical I just shared with you. I have been informed that I am responsible for disproving three zoning complaints filed by a neighbor with a known history of mental illness. The county has since acknowledged that they cannot substantiate these complaints, with the exception of one, for which the only evidence consists of two satellite images they claim are taken in two different years. Beyond the mental health issue of the complainant, he trespassed on a neighbor's property to take one of the photos he submitted with the complaint. To make matters worse, the county employee conducting, that conducted the investigation unlawfully drove on a non-motorized trail and lied to law enforcement when questioned about his authorization to do so. He still had the job. This same employee issued a letter on November first containing statements that neither he nor the county can substantiate. What kind of precedent are we setting in Chippewa County? Are we prepared to accept a governance model where unverified complaints trigger formal investigations and penalties with no accountability and delayed communication from public officials? Of no. I emailed seven days ago, Mr. Churros and Mr. Lawson have yet to get a response, have yet to get a response from seven days ago. The process bears a troubling resemblance to government system we often criticize. Those were vague accusations unsupported by credible evidence or enough to upend a citizen's life. These complaints are more than a year old. While I was prepared to defend my position, we are now in the process of selling the property, and these unresolved issues are interfering with that process. When I asked why these matters remain open, I was told that these zoning complaints are considered a low priority, and the county lacks the personnel and funding to properly investigate or conduct a property survey. If there are insufficient funds for a survey, how can the county justify spending money to take this matter to court, which has been made clear to me to run the bill? Furthermore, the county's position is that all the complaints have merit until disproven. What would prevent a disgruntled resident or a lowly lodging owner on his way out the door to file basis complaints against every commissioner member here or against county staff as an act of retaliation? Is this really the type of system we want to preserve? I respectfully ask this board to take the following actions. Close complaint number one, immediately upon reviewing the supporting documentation I will submit. Close complaint number three, as Jeff has acknowledged, he indicated already would. Accept video evidence that clearly shows that the mobile home in question is entirely located on Waterway Inn property and close complaint number two. Once all complaints are closed, issue a formal letter stating that there are no open complaints associated with the property. And more importantly, as important to me, establish clear policies and guidelines to prevent similar situations from arising in the future, including clear evidentiary standards and accountability for investigation purposes. This is an opportunity for the Chippewa County Board to set a new standard and one that reinforces fairness, transparency, and respect for rights of residents. Thank you for your time and consideration, T.S. At the same time, I didn't give you the poor and at times insulting communications I experienced from Chippewa County staff, but there is plenty of opportunity for improvement in this area, and I would be happy to discuss that at a different time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else? Anybody else? Move on to scheduled videos, or item seven, A, Chelsea's Closet. Please. Say your name and.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Budak. I have Chelsea's Closet here in Chippewa. I have some literature that I'd like to pass out, if that's acceptable. Okay. Thank you. So, there you go. In August of two thousand twenty-three, Chelsea's Closet was awarded a $10,000 grant from Chippewa County for RVs Belt Run.
Thank you.
We have taken that grant and we have invested it in Chelsea's Closet. Dresses, shoes, shirts, ties for the students. Thank you. Chelsea's Closet started in October of two thousand thirteen, and we have consistently grown in the almost twelve years that we've been doing this. This past year, when we closed out our year, the middle of June, we had just shy of 4,600 students utilize our program. Four thousand six hundred students were able to go to homecoming, prom, winter formals, dances that their schools sponsor. If Chelsea's Closet wasn't available to these students, I don't think that they would be going. The youth that utilizes this program comes from sixty-six different high schools across the state. We also have families from out of state that come in and borrow. The grant that you provided us has changed the course of thousands and thousands of students' lives. Now, Chelsea's Closet doesn't just do formal attire. We also do self-investment, positive words of affirmation. We invest in the students in multiple ways. We don't allow for any negative self-talk. When a young man puts on a suit and gets dressed to go to a dance, he comes out of the fitting room and he has nothing but self-confidence. When a girl puts on a dress, she questions herself when she looks in the mirror. I don't know. What do you think? Does it make my arms look fat? I don't know. That's where the self-investment. We don't allow self-negative talk because every single student that comes into Chelsea's Closet is absolutely perfect, exactly the way that they are. Even the girls and the boys that have a need for two different sized shoes. This past prom season, I had students that had, two students in particular, that had two different sized shoes, two different sized feet, that she needed two different sized shoes. Because of the grant money that was provided to Chelsea's Closet, we were able to look at those two students and say, no problem, got it, we'll order them right now. The one girl had tears in her eyes, and the other student said very silently, I've never had two pair of shoes. I've never had a pair of shoes that fit you well. For the boys that come in and borrow suits. And one boy that didn't have a belt. He didn't have shoes, and he didn't have colored socks to match his suit. And let me show you how he showed me that he didn't have a belt and that he didn't have proper attire. He came in for his appointment and he was given to me, or given by me, a pair of dress pants, a shirt, and a vest and a jacket, and he went in the dressing room and tried them on. And I tell every young man that goes into the dressing room, put your pants on, put your shirt on, tuck your shirt in, make sure that your shirt buttons line up with your fly, put everything on, and come back out and show me. And when he came back out, he had that on, like I had asked, but he was doing this with his pants. And he came walking down the hallway, and I said, looks great, I like the color, matches nicely, how do the pants feel? I could tell by looking at him and the way that he was holding them, they were too big. He said, I like the way they feel. I said, okay. I like the color, looks good on you, you got the buttons lined up nicely, how do the pants fit? I like the way they heal. Okay. He's not answering me, he's avoiding my question. All right, I'm going to be straightforward. How do the pants feel? Are they too tight around the waist? Are they bunching? Are they binding? Are you okay with wearing them like that? And his response was, it'll be okay as soon as I put another pair of pants on, you're gonna need to. So this is a child that has been conditioned to figure it out, don't ask for more, don't ask for anything different. What you get is what you get, and that's what you get. So I turned around and I looked at the ceiling because I'm gonna cry because he didn't know to ask or say, hey, crazy lady in the scrubs that's here to give us all fashion advice, these are too big, can I have something different? And I just said, you know what? Let's find you a different pair of pants that will fit better. My fault. I gave you a pair of pants that were too big. Or, let's see if we have a belt that fits. Oh, okay, all right. We got him outfitted, and he looked great, and he was confident. He borrowed the whole thing. The three-piece suit, the shirt, the tie, without the socks and the shoes. Anyone to come? That's because you granted Chelsea's Closet a $10,000 grant. That we are able to look at a situation and a student in need and invest in their self-esteem or invest in their mental health and allow them to participate in things that are a right passage. Can I take a poll here? How many of you went to prom or homecoming? There are at least sixty-seven percent of the students in Chippewa High School that borrow from Chelsea's Closet. There is at least thirty-eight to forty percent of students from Indian Lakes that borrow. The rest of that is from outside of Chippewa County. That means that Chelsea's Closet, a very small nonprofit that invests in the students in our communities, holds more than four thousand students from other areas. Chelsea's Closet is pulling students and families from outside of our county into our county and to our town to come to Chelsea's Closet because they don't have the financial resources, and there's no other organization like Chelsea's Closet that's going to facilitate dreams, goals, and create memories for these kids. We couldn't do what we do if we didn't have the support of the grant. I don't think that any of you have had the opportunity to ever be in Chelsea's Closet. If that's something that you'd like to take a tour and see, I would be honored to have you come in and look at where you have what you have helped create and what you have granted for us and the community. To say thank you for the $10,000 grant seems so small. The literature that I've given you has some of the students that have borrowed. It gives you an insight as to what that looks like in Chelsea's Closet and some of the kids. Thank you for making an impact in Chelsea's Closet. Greatly appreciated. I'm very humbled by your support. I have pictures, hard copy pictures of things that you would like to see them. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Questions to do this?
Mr. County, please. Thank you for what you've done for our friends and the communities surrounding us, in our life and our water. But Chelsea's Closet, shortly after you opened it, and through the nine years that I was sheriff, led that open, the impact you made on some of those kids. I mean, $10,000 to invest in a kid if there's a purpose as to what you do and think, don't let somebody on that thing. So thank you for doing that, sir.
Any other questions, Scotty?
Yeah, just, yeah. Take a look at the literature, it's, you know, the inside page there, it's way more than just, you know, provide dresses, there's a whole process and, you know, both my daughters have used the services and it's just, just amazing what she's done, what Jeanette has done, so. More than just giving out dresses, it's just amazing that she's there, so thank you, Bernie.
Thank you. I appreciate that job.
Any further comments? Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Finance directors report that it's PG nine in your right. PG nine to ninety-four, a lot of figures.
Figure eight. We're looking at the period ending May, we should be at forty-one point sixty-seven percent at this time. Revenue is a million thirty, May of twenty-five, two million seventy-seven thousand eighty dollars forty-one cents, or thirteen point four one percent of the budget as compared to the year prior, one million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety dollars seventeen cents, or twelve point eight nine percent of the budget, or an increase of one hundred forty-nine thousand four ninety-two. Accounts that are over twenty-five thousand difference as compared to the prior year, one oh one, one nine one five four oh, which is a state grant for, it's up forty-nine thousand, I'm sorry, it's down forty-nine thousand because last year, this was a grant for early voting that the clerk's office got for new equipment and stuff, and obviously, we're voting this year, so. And then, one oh one, four hundred, four oh four. Convention tourism, this is money we get from the state for the convention tourism bureau, it's up twenty-eight thousand. We've received more from the state as compared to the prior year, I don't quite know why, but you get what we get, so don't complain. One oh one, four hundred, five four one, for late judges salary is down twenty-nine thousand, and this is timing related. This year, we received the funding quarterly payment in June, last year, we received it in May, so it'll catch up next month. Expenditures, May thirty-one and twenty-five, five million nine hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars thirty cents, thirty-one point three eight percent of the budget as compared to a year prior, five million eight ninety-six, two hundred seventeen dollars eighty cents, or thirty-three point two five percent of the budget. And total increase is seventy-five thousand ten dollars and fifty cents, and that is one point two seven percent increase over the prior year, which I thought is really, really good, so that's really good. The department set are over twenty-five thousand as compared to the prior year, we haven't discussed prior, Department two sixty-seven, major equipment building improvement is down thirty-one thousand. Last year, we did seal coating. The projects that we're working on this year haven't started yet, but they have started in June, but they're not showing up in this report. Department seven fifty-one fairgrounds is down sixty-one thousand, that's also just the timing of the projects. Last year, we had bleachers going, hand lever gates. And this year, we haven't started anything in May as, we have in June, but, so that will also catch up as well. The second report, the cash summary by fund. Total balance, thirty-two million eight hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred twelve dollars and eighty-one cents as compared to the prior year, twenty-nine million nine hundred thirty thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars seventy-three cents, or an increase of two million nine hundred forty-one thousand eighty dollars and eight cents as compared to the prior year. General fund, eight million nine hundred twenty-one thousand, nine, eight million nine hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars fifty-seven cents May of twenty-five as compared to the prior year of eight million sixty-three thousand four hundred one dollars twenty-seven cents, or an increase of eight hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents. Do anyone have any questions, Bernie? I think that's what I'm saying, is done, and I'm breathing a little bit till we, next meeting, talk about budget.
I was going for the finance. Our motion to receive and class. Or. Of the board. Movement's quoted, Dan Clark.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yeah.
Commissioner Claremont.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Stankster.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion's carried seven and zero. We're down to administrators report, there's number nine on your agenda, Ford.
Update on a few topics, as Sue mentioned, our audit is completed, the auditors should be here on July twenty-second evening to give a presentation. Would like to organize Sue and treasurer's office and all department to work, but especially Sue puts in a lot of hours pulls the water, wait here to get this all together, and I one day came in and she showed me the screen that the auditors have sent to her, and it was like, let's give them six, give them a response and information she has to get back through that that goes kind of slip over in a couple of days, so the amount of work, we always appreciate that, and wanted to recommend her for that. Like she said, she gets about a week to take a breather here, and then we're back in the budget process again. We get great communication and cooperation from the departments and we've worked with auditors here a couple of years and we've got some good numbers maybe presented here in just one second. Next project on USDA emergency watershed protection program, we've been working with USDA staff for the past month to to have some eligibility and ability to clean some of our water courses out, specifically rural watersheds here around the city of Chippewa again over in township area, and then we also had some surveys, Surgeon River, particularly in Willmont Township, Mentor Township, where we saw a lot of debris in those areas, so we were fortunate, the state police flew some aerials for us, and we got a lot of information. We narrowed down areas of concentration, maybe at the next meeting there, I'll show some of those pictures we have. USDA staff took those and put them on the digital map for us, and we can pull up the locations. So where we're at right now, we have about a week, we're USDA staff, they're engineers, will look at those sites and try to place numbers of the cost for removal, and then we're making initial contacts with some of the property owners to see if they can, if they're interested in providing access. So this window is very tight, we really have a little over a week here to get this next phase accomplished and we'll work with USDA here in the next week to get that identified and see if these areas can go to the next step of possible funding. Accessibility to these sites are difficult on a lot, some are close to property or maybe can access through a yard, but others are completely embedded in the watershed. The only way you would be able to get to that is line up the water portion, some kind of flotation. And they're not necessarily near structures, so the premise of this grant is to protect structures in the future from possible under-year flood, which unfortunately, we see in Texas what can happen with that, unfortunately, we don't have the deal with anything that's quite extreme, but it doesn't clear the water portions just for recreational purposes, you've got a lot of questions about that. It's not clear for kayaking with the rain, it's the clear possible degree that could wash out, go up to road calvert, back to the old, and then wash the road out in the future. So then we'll keep on working with the staff and see if we can pull this project together. The next week, we just provided a draft copy of our disposal surplus computing equipment there, just for the board to look at. For disposable equipment here in the past, basically, for smaller type of things, we've either disposed them directly for computers, or if it's in the case of a vehicle or something, we'll put out for bids on nationwide bidding platforms and get that back, so this is kind of a snapshot, we've had a couple of requests from employees in the organization, when their computer specific lap house are completed, do they have the opportunity to purchase those, are they depreciating or not, so it's not too good final discussion today, but give the board a chance to look at that, and I believe we'll draft up another disposable policy that matches what we've based on my action for the last twenty years to kind of coincide with that for the board to look at. Would like stayed at the fairgrounds there, I know the fair meeting last night, so I mean, like recognize the fair board and members there for donating their time to build the divorce arena. Lumber was purchased. Lumber was purchased through county funds, but there's a group on the fair board and other volunteers that are volunteers, they're trying to actually build, rebuild the horse arena. So kind of continuation of our improvements there, expect for the dog park for the crews to be here around July fifteenth, that should take them a couple of days to sew fencing. We want a group that's focused on that as approach, and our lumber to purchase some lumber at, at just costs, to hopefully build some shade pavilions. Once we get the fencing in, the furniture and other accessories for the dog park, then we'll reevaluate again, we have enough funds to build shade pavilions there. Hopefully sometime shortly after Labor Day, we can have kind of a brand, brand opening of that, I don't expect the pavilions to be done, but all the other facilities will be open by that date.
Snapshot of a few projects now. Questions, comments, or events there? Any committee reports under ten? Any old business, other than old commissioners? Moving on to new business then, personal policy revision. So personnel director, HR director, I should say.
Good morning. Just have a couple policies, the first one, five hundred dash nine categories of employment. No content changes, just basically updated the format to match the rest of the format, and a few minor changes in terminology where needed. Motion to approve the policy?
Do I do them all at once?
That is fine with me, as long as you approve them all. They should be easy, so it should be good.
Five hundred nine sixteen nineteen twenty-six?
Yeah. Do you want me to just go through the rest of them?
Sure.
Okay, policy five hundred dash sixteen is medical insurance, so what we updated on here was regarding people that opt out of insurance. At time of employment, we're gonna just pay out what their balance of their opt-out would be, instead of waiting until May or November. Just kind of helps the finalization of their employment process easier than having to wait like six months or five months to pay out their, what they would have been owed for opting out of insurance, so. It's a little bit more efficient for them and for us, actually. And then policy five hundred dash nineteen vacations, this is an update to stay consistent with the ASME union contract. So what we would be doing would be adding at twenty-five plus years of service, the employee would get twenty-five days of vacation. That would be an update. And then policy five hundred dash twenty-six longevity, again, to stay consistent with the ASME union contract, we would be adding at twenty-five plus years of service. We would update it to five hundred dollars to the common policy for longevity.
Missioners included in that?
Probably so. Nice try. Motion to approve?
So we've got a motion approved all four of those.
I make that motion this morning. You know, it's tough getting all of that. Get money like just, but we've got to stay in that, yeah, employees. We've got to retain these things more. You got great people.
Instead, we train them and then move on.
Right.
Dude, so we discussed the marketing one?
Yeah, we did talk, yeah, all four of them.
Yeah, that one was just for the opt-out, people that are opting out, and if they terminate, that their their payment of what their opt-out would have been, would get paid at time of termination that's a leading month later.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have support, all four?
All set.
Thank you, yeah. Further discussion? Ben and third.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Stansfield?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
We're down to twelve B, region nine, area agency on aging. It's one oh nine on your iPad board.
That's an area agency on aging, for aging rather, this is for annual multi-year patient plan that they, they send to the counties. Basically, they use what their plans for services are over the next year, also it ties back into a three-year plan if the vacancy has sort of approval, the region nine, there are the agents in aging twenty-six annual multi-year initiation plan.
Pleasure.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dale, support? All support. Then, then.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stansfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermott?
Yes.
Thank you, board, that's carried seven and all, we're down to twelve B, the side out group, service agreement.
Service agreement with side out group, which are engineer architects for, for county building projects. The amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, this is to design window replacements, phase one for the county building here, and also phase one of structural replacement. Our recommendation is motion through the professional service agreement, the side out group, the process that wasn't until a few hours. Authorize, sign and authorize any necessary adjustment.
As you know, Jeff usually works as our general contractor. Does a good job in that.
Just to chairman, I would need to leave that in the service.
Thank you, Steve, support?
I'll support.
Jeff Ossman, support. Ben and clerk.
Commissioner Stansfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five is twelve B. PIHP procurement insurance, one fifty-two on your iPad.
It's a resolution that the poses the Michigan Department of Health Services plan to implement that a primitive process in patient health plans. And we had the director here from community health at the last meeting, that reviewers in the past, at the discussion again at the state level, that services for mental health would be privatized perhaps in the state of Michigan, and this is our resolution of asking the board commissioner to basically oppose that change through the state of Michigan, and this was, mine was provided from regional health. So open for board consideration.
Pleasure, board.
As chair, as I just, I suppose the administrator, just the concern of this is, we haven't heard the other side. I mean, I put it from this side, I mean, I don't know what you're actually, I don't, I don't have a vast understanding of this. Just privatization, or better, who's doing it, or, I just, I don't, it's kind of hard to either jump on board with all of that, not giving it, I, I understand the principle and the concern you may have about it, but as a, also as a taxpayer and something along the way, I'm just not sure, you know.
Makes you kind of worried, doesn't it?
Well, again, I, and, because it's so important to be taken care of, and that's the problem, is our mental health systems broke, so I don't know if, I'm just going to continue on, or, that's why I wish there'd be more discussion, a little more about it. Just going forward, you know, like, you know, I appreciate the position, and I mean, I can I think, you know, necessarily bring myself to support that, but I'd really like to know the other. It's a little more on that, I don't know if that's pretty.
And I, I would agree completely with Commissioner Stansfield, maybe it's probably, it's not heard, you're learning with him back, with some of the other side, in your art, you're saying this. I don't know.
I should think there might be a profit basis here, right?
It just did another little, before we do this, let's, let's, we're expecting something important, that's just my position.
In table, right?
I mean, I couldn't find out enough information on the backside, just looking at it, so you're good, you know, if they're different, is there a group on the other side? Maybe do a draft or something, or do a contest, is it?
Find out who the opposition is.
I guess, I guess that's, I don't know who are really opposing.
Yes. Table then, right?
I, I would be comfortable with that, I don't, I don't like surgery, I just, I don't want them to think that we don't turn looking out for them, because that's not at all the case in my position, it's just, I just I, I just wonder who the other side is that we're going to approach that.
Yeah.
Boy, I mean, I can give them a little more research and time, but I mean, just over the weekend, I read that, I'm trying to look at this, how do you move the search, do you have, it sounds really helpful, that I could try and get because I'm just curious who it, what is the I don't know, I don't know the other. Is it an industry, is it another?
Table it for thirty days to the next, finish my next thing?
I'm comfortable with that.
I'll make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion over ten, just thirty days to get further into making.
You have support over here?
I would support that.
Yes, I have a motion to table, and clerk.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Stansfield?
Yes.
Thank you, board. I just don't like giving that, this is.
Now we can do the homework.
I've been, you know, it's not good, so, I don't think it's.
Table thirty day. We're down to twelve E, resolution twenty-five, asking citizens, businesses, individuals, the service during the we're handed out a revised motion. Found you table.
Sure, if I may.
Yep.
I did contact Jeff after the original came out, and my request was to add, because of the other names, representatives and so forth, that, and it really drove this to this column, German runs from, I request that his names be added, just that he will get directed, and with the changes that Jeff made here, I would make a motion.
Thank you, Dale.
I'll support it.
Moved and supported. Mr. Ritter? Ben and clerk.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
You bet.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stansfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermott?
Yes.
Want to take a break? Or do you want to carry us? Board matters for discussion, and would you have anything?
I would like to, I, I attended the veterans subcommittee meeting and helping, many needs are we, we bring in millions of these kind of to our veterans, to our veterans' office, and with service, I can't remember, he's not living, it's hundreds of veterans in this community, they have, well deserved as a thirty-two year retired veteran. I've seen over the years, that office evolved from what it was to what it is today, and we are top notch, however. Because of the numbers and the volume that they are doing, I, I think you need to seriously look at providing some extra help to that office. Maybe a part-time individual to start, and because it takes so long for them to train, so we lose one of those individuals to be doing that office, we lose one. We're gonna be hiding the eight ball before it gets started, so, I know we've discussed this before, and I did talk to Jeff about this, so somebody wasn't wide inside of like today's meeting, but I think seriously we need to look at providing some additional help in there. He said maybe hard time to start, get the individual trained out and reevaluate.
Okay, I, I know the veterans coming from other counties over here, because of the good service taken away.
Yeah, they, and I know that they have been, at first they were willing to help all, but got to a point where they cannot. And so they have really to turn to you as much as possible. But we have, this community, as many local communities, have a very high percentage of green regions compared to other areas that are veterans, and raises are right here. As they call them, one percent, there's one percent of the population in this country, provide safety, security, and freedom for the other ninety-nine percent. So I think we owe it to our veterans to provide that service.
Thank you, Dale, comments? Okay, think of anybody else? Board, now construction.
Mr. Chair, I would, I sure like to, we can comment on our, the industry regarding you want to sell project and where we're at with that, and the whole, the full board has a better understanding. And if I'm not back from a terrible alcohol, and I know, there's some destruction issues, but there was minor like poppeting about that. But we've met on a couple of occasions, and I just don't buy it personally, that we need to be fast enough to get this project up and running at where it should be. I mean, you spent a half million, over a half million dollars, extra is money preparing.
Two cells?
Pardon me?
Two germ cells out, right?
So, yes, Jeff? You must have answers to that, Jeff, I'm, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, on, on the construction side, the cells are completed, waiting for final inspection, there were some fire alarm systems that we had to get final installation, a few things of the door locks and stuff like that, so from the construction standpoint, we're ready for the process, we're at the junction where I'll get to get the course together, also with sheriff's department to discuss on the permitting side. What permitting track, we'll continue on, so originally we have MBHHS permitting through basically childcare funding situation for childcare funds. You know, maybe staff from jail personnel, so we have to have that discussion right now, for one track, we're running, you're trying to get permitting on, and the timing of that, and but I will move forward as we good communication with the judge and the sheriff on setting that up, I would like to request basically the internal conversation between the departments there, talk about the details, there has been this question to bringing, bringing in state agencies on getting some answers. But I think before that, conversation going to occur, we need to make sure that we're on the same page or internally before you have a regulating agency coming in, we're trying to ask questions, and we're, we have to have our negotiations perfect, while we have a regulating system come out of town, so. Let's get those down very well, and we can move the time, timing up on the topic here and try to get everybody together.
Okay.
Good question.
Sure.
Where are we used to developing the training, I, I know that we have these, these specific staff specifically training, and you know is that in process, or can you start that?
We, we have personnel trained, but the expiration on training expired, so if I, I understand, I'll have to confirm with the sheriff, although you have one, one officer, he's has a training certification that could be a trained trainer, but I have to confirm that through the sheriff, that's my understanding. So again, the pathway of, of approval for permitting has to be agreed to, once we pursue that, then the training is specific to that, that approval process, so if there's MBHHS standards for getting different than in, it goes on a court court on program, the training is. Court on program, the training is different tracks there.
I believe, Steve, the whole process of juvenile incarceration. Maybe bigger fish to swallow. Answering question by. A lot of people.
Well, a lot of people involved in it.
So that'd be, I, I know. Last before I retired and sheriff crooked her already with four that would qualify for training, trainer. Said predominantly one.
That's my understanding. I had them confirmed through the sheriff, but that's my understanding.
And then along those comments, Mr. Chair. I know when we started the process that. Ju, the judge. Was fully on board. Some of the reasons for that were it keeps these families here, keeps the kids here. And it saves the town hundreds of thousands. And the other thing that does is it keeps the road patrol here patrolling versus transferring. The transport facility service to Indiana, Ohio, Texas. And so that was all over here.
You're bound free. In line with some of the compass things we did.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think the judge, the judge was. Is extremely.
Thank you, Dale. Anything else? Anything else to come under, or manage? Moving down to citizens' families, number forty-nine again. Please off the podium.
I tell them that? Sure does help. I wasn't aware that things could be handed out. So. I only printed enough for each commissioner, I apologize. For those. That felt weird happening. Just going to set my alarm here, because I think I'm going to speak again. And as my life will tell you, I can quickly, uh, trip to go off the rails. So I just want to go over a little bit more in depth, these complaints. So here's number one. It stated, this shed is, doesn't have a zoning permit. And, and I questioned that, why do I need a permit to move a shed on my property? And I didn't get a real clear answer other than, well, depending on the size, you may not need it, but. If you do, you got to pay us a hundred and forty-four bucks. And this is something I discussed with John before. This is a heavily Republican county that's all about keeping our hand on the citizen's pocket and smaller government. This seems the exact opposite of that. Anything they can do to get money from me, we're going to do. So I, I still question, why, why do I need a permit to move a barn that was already on my property? The second one, and the more laughable one here, that I alluded to in my hypothetical. The new mobile home. New mobile home. And again, I discussed this with Jeff. This is a county letterhead, taxpayer dollar. They're stating this is fat, that I bought a new one in. If I did a mobile home, I'd think that'd be two or three days worth of work. And so concerned was this, this grown old citizen. That I did this, not one video piece of evidence. What were submitted was two pictures, one of this, one of which was taken trespassing on a neighbor's property. What on county letterhead is written, new. With no, no proof of that. Something I discussed with Jeff and he acknowledged with the friend. And then to support that are two pictures that are attached. That purported to show the new mobile home with handwritten twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. And I don't know where these come from. I don't know if they've been manipulated by the same person who broke the law, driving his vehicle on a rail trail. And still has a job with the gun. The third one is probably the most egregious one of them all. And that's on the back page. The camper being rented out and used by Will's Holdings LLC does not appear to be on the property at all, da, da, da. It's not on the property. And I provided the county with a letter from consumers one year ago. That stated, we had permission to store things on their property. One of them was camper, that's what stored it. How does this county have the gumship to write on there? That I'm charging somebody money for that, they have no proof of that. Yet that's written here. And it's up to me somehow to have to prove that's not true. My time is up. But thank you. I do hope that we can find a reasonable resolution to this. That doesn't involve permits and county meetings and people visiting. This is ridiculous to me. I shouldn't have to prove that things are false. The county should have to prove the accuracy of that, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else? We're down to board member comments. Let's start on the left.
You said one comment. Name of the related. This morning at one twenty-nine A M, I had a new grandson born. He's a short county residence.
We're down to there. Great. And that's twenty-six thousand and three. Thank you. Mike Gary. And I think.
Yes, this, two things, first and foremost, I received a. That's the newsletter in my email, I don't know how long that's been published. Somehow it opened in my inbox. Several years. Okay, well, I guess they cut me into a loop. Anyway, greatly appreciated and very informative and just want to compliment this, anyone that I've dealt with, well done. My second comment is relative to the resolution that we adopted today. Recognizing those who helped us in the last one. You know, during a meeting, I had made a comment that I felt that probably each of us within our own little districts. Probably have people that need to be recognized, I certainly think you need. And what I was sitting in the room right back here today, John Muller. There are a number of people stood up in my area, my district. A lot of government employees now all first responding, he's pretty deep. I would hope that going forward, maybe you have an opportunity, each commissioner to nominate person to be from the history, recognize, says.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, we're going to everybody. Going to a closed session, session, we know business conducted after that. The closed session is to look at union negotiations and to handle the administrator's evaluation. Mike, if you have the red list, if your idea of the motion by the. Middle second by thirteen of the. Party, you won't do it, go to the closed section with the request of the county's administration behalf of the. County authority with large parties in there. With county administration. Be exactly what it is, some contractors, these. That though? You want me to finish all of this and all that? Okay. Contract goes into the union initial to section eight C of the Open Meetings Act, being M C L fifteen point two six eight C. Motion by Commissioner Newman, seconded by Commissioner Warfield, to go to the closed session with the request of. Deputy Austin, an employee of the county and district, it's section eight A of the Open Meetings Act, being M C L fifteen point two six eight, parents A. Commissioner, the periodic first evaluation. Or, or women supported, man clerk.
Commissioner Osman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stansberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll take a ten minute break, go into closed session, be back here at ten.